Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled school board meeting for this Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Board members are attending in person or telephonically, so I'm going to take a quick roll call. Let me begin with Member Gallo.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon, Member Gallo. Member Lopez?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Member Coburn.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon, Member Gould. Good afternoon, Member Felder.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Member Felder. Good afternoon, Dr. Baccaster Dental?
Vice Chair Bird.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, and myself. Good night. As a reminder, face masks are optional on school board property. I also wanted to remind the public that the board members will not be engaging in outside electronics or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus our attention on the meeting itself. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public, when speaking, please make sure your microphones are turned on and speak directly into the microphone so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you correctly, clearly. Again, thank you all so much for participating. In a minute, we're going to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. But first, I wanted to recognize Member Gould to share some information with us, and then I want to call on Member Lopez to lead us in the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to take a moment to recognize a gentleman that we lost that was very important to our students, Mr. John Steve Chirnieski. Thank you. He was a media specialist at Castleview Elementary, and he passed away Sunday, April 10. We do something incredible at OCPS. Many seniors write letters back to teachers that impacted them, and this is a letter I was supposed to deliver that I want to share with you if I make it through. "As I write this letter, I happen to be surrounded by my closest friends, friends who just so happened to be some of the most incredible students in our graduating class, students who are not afraid to push their limits, students who will ask questions to satisfy their curiosities, students who pursue their passions, students who support their peers to achieve greatness. What connects these students? They are part of Mr. Chirnieski's class, 2013-14 4th grade class, in fact. It's no coincidence that all these students were part of your class. I remember the night before the first day of 4th grade. I was absolutely terrified because, for the first time in my life, I was aware of my insecurities. I could point out my differences, afraid to grow up, afraid to talk to new people, afraid to be seen as the weird girl who liked Harry Potter a little too much. I entered your class, and my mind was filled with worries, but those worries were quickly erased. The first thing you taught us was the power of authenticity." "I always admire you. I always admired how you were never afraid to be yourself. On the first day of school, you made sure to share your hobbies, interests, and even how to spell your name with us. You made yourself approachable, relatable, human. You made sure we knew it was always okay to be the first person in the room to crack a joke, to sing a silly song about being by law felt, to never be afraid to be our truest selves. You always prioritized your connection with us. Every day, we knew the moment we walked into your class, we had someone that supported us. For helping us to excel academically, to cheering us on at our weekend soccer games, you never failed to make sure we felt supported in all aspects of our lives." "Thank you. You showed me the importance of making others feel accepted. To this day, I make an effort to spread smiles wherever I go, even if it means embarrassing myself. Because you never know who needs it, you taught me to have self-confidence, to stand firm for what I believe in, because my voice is unique and I can do anything. I truly do not know where I would be without your class and the countless life lessons I learned there. I am so beyond lucky to be able to call you my 4th grade teacher. Thank you. From Madeline, Class of 2022 Windermere High School."
Thank you for sharing that with us. And now, Member Lopez.
In light of the passing of two of our students, I wanted to take a moment to share a few words about them in honor of their life and memory. My prayers go out to their families and loved ones in light of this difficult moment. Eliana. Eliana was a student at Odyssey Middle School. She had a big heart and infectious smile. She has known as helper, especially to her teachers. Her cheerful personality and quickness to respond to questions posed by teachers assisted in creating a positive learning environment. She leaves a big void in the lives of the Odyssey family and will always be remembered with love by her teachers and friends. Rogelio. Rogelio was a student at Colonial High School and a charismatic young man. He loved his family very much and always spoke highly of them, especially his mom. He enjoyed being with his classmates and loved his teachers, especially agriculture science. He enjoyed life, making others smile, and having fun. His aspirations were to own his own business to help support his family. Rogelio always made you smile, and he will be greatly missed."
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly a difficult way for us to start our meeting. We're used to starting with celebrations. It is always so tragic to lose students so young. But I want to thank you again for joining us for this evening's meeting. We have some students and school recognitions that I'd like to acknowledge before we discuss tonight's order of business. For our first recognition, I'm honored to recognize Lake Buena Vista High School Junior Daniel Navarro Nabbas. I hope I have Daniel's name spelled correct, for his heroism. On March 24, 30,000 OCPS high school students throughout the district learned CPR in observance of World Hard Day. And first of all, that in itself is cause for celebration. I am always so excited when I see our high school students taking an interest in CPR and being available to their fellow man. The annual initiative is part of a partnership among the district and the American Heart Association, local fire departments, and Nemours Children's Hospital. However, on this same day, Daniel saved a pregnant coworker's life during his shift at Wendy's using the life-saving CPR skills he had learned at school from the Orange County Fire Department. With that, I'd now like to invite Guy Swenson, Principal of Lake Buena Vista High School, to the podium to tell us more about Daniel and his heroic deed. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. My name is Guy Swenson, and I'm the proud Principal of Lake Buena Vista High School. And for the people here in the boardroom and at home, each high school instructs all 9th and 11th grade students in hands-only CPR. It's a huge effort on any campus to get half our students each year trained, but we get it done. I explained to our faculty this year that while this may take away from your classroom today, you just never know whose life might be saved because of it. Little did we know what would happen later that afternoon. Our Lake Buena Vista High School student, Daniel Navarro, was in the gym with our other students and was instructed on CPR. I would later learn that day that Daniel thought to himself, "When am I ever going to have to use this?" Well, later that afternoon, Daniel was working at his job at Wendy's when a customer said there was a female employee on the floor in the stall in the restroom. His coworker wasn't feeling well, was dehydrated, unresponsive, and she was pregnant. Daniel rushed in, used what he had learned just hours earlier, administered CPR, and 911 was called. The very same first responder team that instructed him and the other LBV students earlier that day is the same team that responded to the call.
Oh, my God.
Later that day, Daniel received a text message from his coworker saying, "Thank you for saving my life." What I think is important about this is the training that was instilled in Daniel is it gave him the confidence to take charge and to not sit back and wait for someone else to step in and do it for him. And for that, I would like to say to Daniel, "Gracias por salvar la vida de una madre joven. Estoy orgoso de ti." Thank you for saving a young mother's life. I'm proud of you. Daniel's mother could not be here tonight because she is working, and in fact, Daniel took off work at Wendy's so he could be here tonight. Please don't tell his boss. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I present to you our hero, Daniel Navarro.
Thank you so much.
So, Daniel, you can either speak, or you can come take a picture with the board, or both.
Yep, right there is perfect. Thank you, Daniel. Principal Swenson, why don't you come in the picture? All right, first he's going to take a picture.
Daniel, we are just so proud of you. I can't imagine, when those first responders arrived, I can't imagine how thrilled they were, right?
Because for the first time in my life, I was aware of my insecurities. I could point out my differences, afraid to grow up, afraid to talk to new people, afraid to be seen as the weird girl who liked Harry Potter a little too much. I entered your class and my mind was filled with worries, but those worries were quickly erased. The first thing you taught us was the power of authenticity. I always admire you. I always admired how you were never afraid to be yourself. On the first day of school, you made sure to share your hobbies, interests, and even how to spell your name with us. You made yourself approachable, relatable, human. You made sure we knew it was always okay to be the first person in the room to crack a joke, to sing a silly song about being a bylaw-felt? To never, to never be afraid to be our truest selves. You always prioritized your connection with us. Every day, we knew, the moment we walked into your class, we had someone that supported us. For helping us to excel academically, to cheering us on at our weekend soccer games, you never failed to make sure we felt supported in all aspects of our lives. Thank you. You showed me the importance of making others feel accepted. To this day, I make an effort to spread smiles wherever I go, even if it means embarrassing myself. Because you never know who needs it. You taught me to have self-confidence, to stand firm for what I believe in, because my voice is unique and I can do anything. I truly do not know where I would be without your class and the countless, countless life lessons I learned there. I am so beyond lucky to be able to call you my fourth grade teacher. Thank you. From Madeline, class of 2022 Windermere High School.
Thank you for sharing that with us. And now, Member Lopez.
In light of the passing of two of our students, I wanted to take a moment to share a few words about them in honor of their life and memory. My prayers go out to their families and loved ones in light of this difficult moment. Eliana. Eliana was a student at Odyssey Middle School. She had a big heart and infectious smile. She has known as helper, especially to her teachers. Her cheerful personality and quickness to respond to questions posed by teachers assisted in creating a positive learning environment. She leaves a big void in the lives of the Odyssey family and will always be remembered with love by her teachers and friends. Rogelio. Rogelio was a student at Colonial High School and a charismatic young man. He loved his family very much and always spoke highly of them, especially his mom. He enjoyed being with his classmates and loved these, and loved his teachers, especially agriculture science. He enjoyed life, making others smile, and having fun. His aspirations were to own his own business to help support his family. Rogelio always made you smile and he will be greatly missed. So now.
And now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly a difficult way for us to start our meeting. We're used to starting with celebrations. It is always so tragic to lose students so young. But I want to thank you again for joining us for this evening's meeting. We have some students and school recognitions that I'd like to acknowledge before we discuss tonight's order of business. For our first recognition, I'm honored to recognize Lake Buena Vista High School junior Daniel Navarro Navas. I hope I have Daniel's name spelled correct. For his heroism, on March 24th, 30,000 OCPS high school students throughout the district learned CPR in observance of World Hard Day. And first of all, that in itself is cause for celebration. I am always so excited when I see our high school students taking an interest in OCPR or in CPR and in being available to their fellow man. The annual initiative is part of a partnership among the district and the American Heart Association, local fire departments, and Nemours Children's Hospital. However, on this same day, Daniel saved a pregnant coworker's life during his shift at Wendy's using the life-saving CPR skills he had learned at school from the Orange County Fire Department. With that, I'd now like to invite Guy Swenson, principal of Lake Buena Vista High School, to the podium to tell us more about Daniel and his heroic deed. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. My name is Guy Swenson and I'm the proud principal of Lake Buena Vista High School. And for the people here in the boardroom and at home, each high school instructs all ninth and 11th grade students in hands-only CPR. It's a huge effort on any campus to get half our students each year trained, but we get it done. I explained to our faculty this year that while this may take away from your classroom today, you just never know whose life might be saved because of it. Little did we know what would happen later that afternoon. Our Lake Buena Vista High School student, Daniel Navarro, was in the gym with our other students and was instructed on CPR. I would later learn that day that Daniel thought to himself, "When am I ever going to have to use this?" Well, later that afternoon, Daniel was working at his job at Wendy's when a customer said there was a female employee on the floor in the stall in the restroom. His coworker wasn't feeling well, was dehydrated, unresponsive, and she was pregnant. Daniel rushed in, used what he had learned just hours earlier, administered CPR, and 911 was called. The very same first responder team that instructed him and the other LBV students earlier that day is the same team that responded to the call.
Oh, my God.
Later that day, Daniel received a text message from his coworker saying, "Thank you for saving my life." What I think is important about this is the training that was instilled in Daniel is it gave him the confidence to take charge and to not sit back and wait for someone else to step in and do it for him. And for that, I would like to say to Daniel, "Gracias por salvar la vida de una madre joven. Estoy orgoso de ti." Thank you for saving a young mother's life. I'm proud of you. Daniel's mother could not be here tonight because she is working, and in fact, Daniel took off work at Wendy's so he could be here tonight. Please don't tell his boss. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I present to you our hero, Daniel Navarro.
Thank you so much.
So, Daniel, you can either speak or you can come take a picture with the board, or both.
Or both. Yep, right there is perfect. Thank you, Daniel. Principal Swenson, why don't you come in the picture? All right, first he's going to take a picture.
Daniel, we are just so proud of you. I can't imagine, when those first responders arrived, I can't imagine how thrilled they were. Right? Yeah. All right, we started out the meeting.
Yeah, this, this is going to help.
Start out the meeting on a down note. Now we're on an up note. Let's see if we can get on an even keel here also. But just, we, we start nearly every meeting celebrating and it's such a wonderful way to begin. So here's something else to celebrate. I also want to take this time to recognize Maxi Elementary School for receiving the Exceeding Expectations Award from the East Coast Technical Assistance Center for Florida. That acronym is ECTAC. You don't need to remember that. I'm going to call it ECTAC from here on out. ECTAC provides technical assistance to a collaborative network of school districts on selective programs contained in the Every Student Succeeds Act. For the past eight years, the organization and its evaluators from across the state review the school grades database after the Florida Department of Education releases them. ECTAC Florida and its evaluators filter the database against some very stringent criteria, which identifies schools that are exceeding expectations. Maxi Elementary is the only OCPS school out of 26 Title I schools in the state to receive that award. The project's school criteria for this award includes being part of the 1819 school grade database, above the state median on the Florida State Assessment in the areas of English Language Art and Math Proficiency and Learning Gains and Science, receiving Title I resources, having an A or B school grade, and meeting 100% of the award requirements. ECTAC Florida filtered the school database, which includes 1,895 Title I schools, and found that there were only 26 in the state eligible for the award after meeting 100% of the criteria and a school visit. To tell us a little bit more about this amazing award, we'll hear from Marjorie Murray, ECTAC Florida's director, who will be presenting the Exceeding Expectations Award to Maxi Elementary's principal, Carletta Davis Wilson, and Dr. Jennifer Cupid McCoy, area superintendent of the West Learning Community. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Jacobs and the entire school board for allowing the opportunity for us to come and present this tonight. You did such a wonderful overview of the program. There's not a lot more to tell, except to highlight the fact that 1,895 schools, and I'm going to say the whole database and the median is all schools, not just Title I and non-Title I. So of the 1,800, because of the state medians, the 1,895 Title I schools across the entire state, all 67 districts, only 26, and you have one of them. So I would like to thank you for sharing your school with us. We spent an entire day at the school, talked to this wonderful parent, similar parents, the leadership team, the teachers. We went to every classroom and it was a wonderful experience. You have so much to be proud of. So we would like to say this evening, thank you so much for allowing them to be in the project. And we want to say congratulations to R M S Maxi Elementary School and its entire staff. This is my 52nd year in public education and I worked 24 for the state. I've been at schools all across the state. I said that to them after, this is one of the state, the schools across the state I would put right up there at the top. You walk into the school, you feel the culture and climate. You see engaged students, you see them on task, and you see happy faces learning and mastering the standards. It is a role model school for the rest of the state. So we'd like to say congratulations to R M S Maxi and its entire staff, to the principal, Carletta Davis Wilson, and also to district leadership, to you Superintendent Jenkins and area superintendent, Dr. McCoy, to Kim Gilbert and the entire federal programs team that brings all the resources effectively and efficiently to the schools so they can do their work. And we'd like to say to the entire school board and Chair Jacobs, because without your direction, your guidance, and your support, Maxi Elementary would not be able to meet this very stringent criteria and exceed expectations. So this evening, what the school will be receiving is this plaque for their wall, and it congratulates them on their award, one of 26 of 1,895. Normally, this would be presented at a conference, but we were not able to have that in the fall of 2020. So since there are little or no opportunities to bring good news to the board, we want to bring it to you. So we've made these across the state to the school boards and have the schools because we wanted you to, to share in this celebration. This will go to the principal, Carletta Davis Wilson, because we know principals move from school to school, unfortunately. So she can take this with her wherever she goes. And then there's just a small check that goes to the school. No public funds in this check at all, so there's no strings attached. They can have a pizza party or some kind of a celebration. There's a letter that says it's not public funds for them to use. So we would like to thank and congratulate the principal and the entire school staff.
Awesome. Director Murray, thank you so much for, not just for the award, but for taking time to be here and to share it with us this evening. What I'd like to do is see if we can get the whole team up here for a picture. Along with... Director Murray, will you join the team? Director Murray, will you come join the team?
Bravo!
All right, before we let you go, any words from Principal Davis Wilson? And from Dr. Cupid McCoy? And then we have some board member comments.
Thank you. I had a few words with... Just good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Jenkins. On behalf of the entire Maxi Elementary School team, I want to thank Dr. Murray, Dr. Cummings, and the ECTAC team for making our teachers and students and parents feel so comfortable during the interviews and observations. We love the students and families that we serve, which certainly makes the heart of the work that we do so meaningful. Our motto at Maxi is teamwork makes the dream work. And I am blessed to lead a collaborative, dedicated school team that is focused on what's best for kids. This recognition proves effective school teams matter, engaged parents, and community partners matter, and together make a difference in the lives of children. I want to give a special thank you to Mr. Greg Moody for first welcoming me to Maxi as principal, and Dr. Cupid McCoy for continuing to trust and support my leadership and my judgment. And finally, thank you to my staff, students, parents, my SAC, PTA, and amazing, talented, and beautiful ladies inside and out from my administrative team who support and execute all the details of the vision. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And Principal, you have earned that trust. And Dr. Cupid McCoy.
You got to be proud.
Good evening, Chair. I am, and I wasn't prepared to speak. Board members, Superintendent Jenkins. I think this is a perfect example of what Orange County Public Schools is all about. I feel like a proud mom right now. And, and that just makes me truly happy. You know, there is so much that we do well here. And again, it's a perfect, perfect example. And I think we all can use this today and use it to motivate us and to uplift us and to be reminded of how powerful collaboration really is. To be reminded of how, when we work together, amazing things happen for our students. So I am delighted to serve and support Maxi Elementary and the entire staff. And I'm truly thankful for the opportunity to lead. Thank you, board. Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you so much. All right, let's, let's hear from Member Gold.
Well, I actually want to comment on both first, Daniel. You know, learning how to do CPR is one thing. Acting is an entirely different thing. And to be, to have your reaction just to jump in there. And, and board member Cobert and I share the school, so we'll be sharing your story everywhere between the two of us. But it is, it's truly an honor to have met you tonight and to hear your story. And thank you for being a real, live example of a hero and not even thinking about yourself, but just jumping in and, and helping somebody else. That's truly amazing. And I get to be a daytime neighbor of Maxi Elementary and the, the school and, and the principal, Davis Wilson, have an exemplary reputation and are really the centerpiece of the Winter Garden community. And you are truly living up to the namesake of Mr. and Mrs. Maxi because they were stellar visionary educators, and that's amazing. And I know Vice Chair Byrd, who, you really sit in her district. I'm just your neighbor. But it is truly amazing and thank you. Just keep up this tremendous path that you're on.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Vice. She, Member, Member Gold said what I was going to say, but that's okay. I, I am so proud of you guys. You, just as Member Gold said, the reputation of this school in the community is stellar, and this just proves why. When you walk into this school, it's just like what, what she said. The kids are so happy and so engaged. And, and this just kind of goes back to what we had a teacher speak at the pre-agenda meeting about how important social emotional learning is and how teaching the whole child is what makes the academics work. And they have figured that out here at Maxi and they make the kids feel like they matter and everything. And they, they, they really do feel cared for and that's why they're doing so well. And your team is phenomenal. You've done such a good job leading them and I'm just, I'm so thrilled. And you know, it's also a visual and performing arts magnet too. So that's just another shout out to how important the arts are because, you know, kids who study the arts and music do well academically. It's proven. So, so anyway, so I, I'm just, I'm so proud of you. Thank you, and thank you so much for coming to recognize them and yay, Maxi.
And Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. First, incredibly proud of Principal Davis Wilson and her strong leadership team. There is just a feeling at Maxi, you know it's a special place. I had the pleasure of visiting, if you recall, the photo, the beautiful artwork that was in the lobby that had the different shades of color on it for Women's History Month/Black History Month. There was one there of me. It actually came from Maxi. I've visited those fourth and fifth grade artists and their teacher and actually contributed to their future artwork because I had to purchase it. I couldn't let them just like paint over it and reuse it next year or something. I wanted it for my personal collection and now I got to find somewhere to put it. But, but, but the feeling at the school is just special. And so I want to commend the principal and her entire leadership team and certainly give our thanks and appreciation to the entire staff as well. You make us proud. Very pleased with that. And since I made that contribution, I want to also mention to Daniel, your mom's not here, would you please tell her that we want to thank her for raising such a fine young man as well? We were sorry she couldn't be here, but we actually wanted to pay homage to her. And certainly don't want you to miss out on the pay you would have gotten tonight. We won't say to your supervisor where, where you were, but we will make up your salary for tonight if you'll see Mr. Howard before you leave. And, and, and I also assume the young lady whose hand you've been holding is someone special to you as well. Did you, you want at least introduce her to us so we know who she is, Daniel? Oriana? Oriana, welcome here as well. And you've got a good one there. You might want to hang on to him. So Mr. Howard's going to wave his hand in the back. That's who you need to see before you leave. We will not let you be missing out on pay for tonight and we still won't tell your supervisor where you were, where you were. And thanks to wonderful Principal Guy Swenson and for the incredible effort. That American Heart Day, that getting the CPR certification is quite an effort for an entire school. Dr. Border brought that to us a couple of years ago. It is a major production, so kudos to you and to your team at Lake Buena Vista as well. And see how it turned out? I bet the entire staff is, is quite proud as well. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I do wish that we had a room full of, of parents and citizens sitting here right now and observing this. We, we have pre-agenda meeting and probably going to have to give some thought to this as we debate how our pre-agenda meetings are run and when they're, when they take place. But at our pre-agenda meetings, we often have people who believe that there are a lot of things that we're not doing right in our schools. And most of, of the concerns are based on something they've heard but aren't factual or maybe happening in one classroom and shouldn't. And we have to address that with 200 and, what do we have now? 205 schools? 205 schools? 206 schools? With a lot of schools and a lot of teachers. Every now and then, something isn't done exactly the way it should be. But when we learn about it, we do our best to fix it. But overwhelmingly, what's happening in our classrooms are wonderful things. And Maxi, you're such a great example of that. And I just wish we had more parents in the room right now to see that and to understand that, to feel good about where their kids are going to school. God bless. Keep up the great work. And you are welcome to leave if you want to now. We're going to go through some proclamations. We have a lot. Pardon me. Oh, no, no, you cannot leave yet. Member Lopez, I thought they could leave first, but Member Lopez, you're recognized.
I just want to talk about Mr. Jose Luis.
Please. This is your time.
Bienvenido, Jose Luis. Si te puedes poner de pie para hablar sobre ti. Jose Luis was appointed civil administrator by the Oceola clerk, of the Circuit's Court and County Controller, Kelvin Soto. In accepting his appointment, he had to resign from his teaching position at Lake Nona Middle School that he has held since 2016. I am sad for losing him as a teacher, but very proud of his professional growth. In his former role, he was a practicing lawyer for nearly 20 years in Puerto Rico. What he enjoyed about being a teacher was being able to bring real world experience to the classroom, helping students to get a real sense of how the courts and legal system works. He's passionate about connecting students to what is relevant to them, catering their education to help them become better citizens. His other achievements include being an active participant in the Latinos in Action Leadership Program and a successful soccer coach that led his Lake Nona Middle School team to the local division championship in 2021. I am proud of his accomplishment and wish you best of luck in your new role. Thank you for all you do.
It's unusual for us to be clapping when somebody leaves us. But thank you for sharing that and thank you for sharing the years that you shared with our students here in Orange County Public Schools. Thank you. And good luck and Godspeed to your new endeavors. A very important role you'll be playing. Thank you. Can you use the, oh, please, take the microphone right there. We want to hear from you.
It's open?
Yes.
Okay. I want to point it out that first, I want to thank Madam Chair and board members, especially you, Ms. Johanna Lopez, for this recognition that I, I, I receive it and I thank for it on behalf of the student to whom I have the opportunity to teach all these last 10 years for OCPS. Because this is an experience, a life experience that you're not going to forget at all. I'm a product of the alternative certification product. I was not a teacher. So thank you for that opportunity given, opportunity that should be given to other citizens in the United States and also in the district so we can have... the United States and also in the district so we can have more teachers that also can bring the real world experience of their careers to the classroom that is truly needed. And thank you all of you for all you do. And thank you for the parent that put their childrens in their, in their, in our hands in such a way that they trust that we're going to drive them not to put in them something, but just to give them opportunities to grow and succeed. Because that's what we try to do so they can become better citizens. As you know, I take this recognition on behalf of all the students I taught, but mostly on behalf of the English language learners that we have in our system. Because as I did too, learning a second language and driving through the turbulent waters of the system of education where you're learning a, a second language, when you have people and teachers that you all, that cares about them, that feel empathy about them, and that bring them the opportunity, we can have examples that the one that we have today in here that they act, that they become their present and able to succeed and present a good citizenship skill in there. So thank you so much. I'm going to miss this place. I'm going to miss this district, but the time has come for opportunities to bring also people help in there. As a matter of fact, I, I was very like, you know, sad at the very first days of training in my new job because I was missing the classroom, obviously. But then when I woke up into the, into the court, and the first thing, because I'm handling, part of the things that I'm handling there in the Civil Division is guardianships and that, and I thought, and I saw a mom, Spanish speaking mom, try to get the guardianship for a niece that need a special education assistant in their school, and we need to support that. So I said, okay, there's always opportunities to help. We are here again. So thank you so much for the opportunity given, and thank you for all you do for our student daily basis. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And sir, I hope when we do, when we have teach-ins, I hope there will be an opportunity that you can come back and share with the students what you're doing now.
And also they can visit the tour so they can give you.
Oh, yes. Yes, absolutely. We'll take you up on that.
Can we take a picture with?
Yes, come on up. We want a picture.
We can take it.
And we had a picture with the student.
Oh, yeah. Wow.
Congratulations. Thank you for your ten year relation.
She's got skills.
Okay, now, we've been here for 45 minutes. We finally get to explain something to everybody in the audience. Today, we are proclaiming April 27th, 2022 as Denim Day here in Orange County Public Schools. And to those of you who may have been looking at this board saying, what's going on with these ladies? Why are half of them dressing down? There's a really good explanation. And to give that explanation, I'm going to ask my dear friend Louis D'Amiani, Executive Director of the Victim Service Center of Central Florida, if he'll come forward to the mic up here, Louis. Yeah, you would try that. And if you can explain to the audience why we're wearing denim and why they might want to consider that tomorrow.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for, for having me here. I will start by saying, Madam Chair, thank you for having me, Board Members. I do a lot of this, right? I go to a lot of these places, and you guys actually are the, are the ones that always come so well-prepared and you're ready for me and, and my spiel. We've been at this now.
We look for a reason to wear denim.
Everybody does, right? So this is, so I'm glad you asked. So Denim Day is an, it started as an international movement in the United States of America. It is, it became a US movement about a decade ago. And basically loosely, it is, follows a, a controversial Supreme Court decision in Italy where a young woman was wearing tight blue jeans and she was sexually assaulted by her taxicab driver. They arrested the guy, they put him in jail, and he appealed his conviction under the premise that because she had on tight jeans, she was somehow complicit in, in her assault. And believe it or not, it made it all the way to the Supreme Court and they overturned the guy's conviction. The women in the Italian Parliament went nuts and protested by wearing jeans. And that's how the movement began. And then it came to the United States and the rest of the story. We picked it up probably six or seven years ago, and everybody said, what are you talking about? And, you know, today, you know, this morning I was at Orange County Commission. We simultaneously were at the Seminole County Commission. Last week, we were at the Osceola Commission, City of Kissimmee, City of Orlando, just about every major governmental entity has, has supported us. But Madam Chair, you, you all were some of the first adopters, and I, I give you kudos for that. What is Denim Day for us? Like, what does it mean and how do you get involved and who can get involved? Anybody, literally anybody can be involved. All of our local governments, as I mentioned, are involved. Businesses, over 60 businesses have already signed up and are involved. And then any average citizen can also be involved. All you have to do, super simple, is wear your jeans on Denim Day, which is tomorrow. So you wear your denim, and then what you hope to do, as you did, was point out, people are going, why are you wearing denim in the middle of the week to work? Well, engage them in a conversation about what Denim Day is and why it's important and why we should stand in solidarity with victims. And, you know, having that conversation in a public way will help transform how we think and talk about sexual violence and, and whether we're going to accept it in our community or we're going to actually make a change. So just having the conversation on the table is such a meaningful moment for us. What we do, and then, and then by the way, take a picture of yourself wearing it. Take a video of yourself wearing it. Take a picture of your group at work, and they're going to be all over the place tomorrow. And then you put it on social media. We are @VSCFlorida. Tag us with your picture and watch this thing explode tomorrow. We will be all over the state of Florida and will be, last year, we got all the way into like North Carolina. It was crazy. It just keeps percolating the more you take pictures and the more you tag us. We have a place at our website, so it's Victim Service Center. The good news is if you start typing the word victim on your Google browser, we are the number one search and we're going to pop up. And, and we also own the domain heelhear.org, which is new for us, but they all take you there. We have a Denim Day page. If you're on Zoom, we have a bunch of resources there, by the way, but tomorrow, if you really want to impress people, we have virtual backgrounds that you can download real quick, and then you can throw it up behind you, and it's got your Denim Day 2022, April 27th. There are posters that you can put up around your office. There's the little 90-second video that we, that's our own, that we produce that tells the story of Denim Day that you can, you can put into your social media as you tweet it out, right? And people can click on it and learn about what, what it is and how they can be involved and why they should be involved. So, you know, together by wearing jeans on Denim Day, we can spread the word across social media. We show support for our survivors in our community. We normalize the conversation about what sexual violence is, and, and then we draw attention to the misconceptions that exist about sexual violence and sexual assault. And that's our goal in all this, is just to create some awareness. Every month, the month of April, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we always end it with a bang with Denim Day, and, and we couldn't do it without all of your support. So I, I honor you, I appreciate you for having me here and for giving me this platform and, and for participating and being such active participants in Denim Day. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to take a moment, I don't see our superintendent here, but I want to take a moment and brag on her because we were a day early because we're here in this public forum. So our board recognizes this day by wearing denim a day early. Dr. Jenkins and I and Vice Chair were at the Central Florida Hotel Lodging Association Luncheon, Scholarship Luncheon. And I don't know that Dr. Jenkins knew that they were going to call her up to the podium to recognize her as the outgoing superintendent, but she, she had done her, her denim and was wearing it with pride. And I knew that they were going to call her up, and I was kind of trying to figure out, was she going to bring this up or was she just going to act like this is how she dresses when she goes to one of these events? So sure enough, first words are out of her mouth is, let me explain my attire. And it was wonderful because not only did she explain why she was wearing it, she got to give a very brief overview of how important this awareness is and, and a pitch for Denim Day herself. So.
Fantastic.
Yes.
I wish she was here. I'd thank her personally.
I know. I keep thinking I'm hearing her coming in, but so she.
There she is.
There she is.
Thank you Superintendent Jenkins. I hear you, you were a day early.
I'm bragging on you, taking out this opportunity when you got called up to the stage at CFHLa's Luncheon to explain to them why they needed to be wearing denim tomorrow. So she did a great job of advocating for the cause.
Fantastic. Well, I really appreciate all the support.
Absolutely. We always appreciate you and everything you do. Thank you. Yeah, let's do that. We're going to come down and get a picture.
Okay.
Okay?
Dynamite.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
I need to come up with a tennis shoe today. Tennis shoe cost. I gotta work on that.
Yeah. Yes. All right. We are also proclaiming May 1st through the 7th as Teacher Appreciation Week here in Orange County Public Schools. And I say this every year, but every week, better be Teacher Appreciation Week here in Orange County Public Schools. And we have a very special guest with us today. We've asked Nancy Welch, who is the 21-22 Teacher of the Year from Orange Technical College, to come forward. Nancy, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Jenkins. It's a delight to be here and to read this very special proclamation for you all. Whereas the School Board of Orange County deeply appreciates and values the work and commitment of its instructional staff, especially during these unprecedented times. And whereas the vision of Orange County Public Schools is to ensure every student has a promising and successful future. And whereas the school district's vision includes our teachers and the supportive families in the community. And whereas teachers who are using their creativity when teaching students and engaging with parents are essential components for student success during distance learning. And whereas teaching is a profession that requires the ability and desire to impart knowledge, creativity, patience, and persistence, and to adapt all learning environments for all students. And whereas teachers dedicate themselves to their students' academic success as well as their social emotional well-being. And whereas, besides parents and family members, teachers are the most influential individuals in the lives of our students and their future. And whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is observed nationally during the first full week of May, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County, Florida encourages parents, students, administrators, support staff, community partners, and citizens to show admiration and gratitude to the teachers of Orange County Public Schools and does hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Week for Orange County Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Nancy, thank you so much. And again, congratulations. I don't recall, is this the first time that Teacher of the Year has ever been a CTE teacher?
Yes, Madam Jenkins.
It is, that's what I thought.
Apparently, it's the first in the history of the state of Florida.
Wow. Well, aren't we good?
Imagine that.
Yeah. Well, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
And it is, it's so important. I, I talk all the time about how proud I am that we went from a graduation rate of less than 50% in 2000 to 98% in our traditional schools now. But you, you can't, you can't consider that success anymore because you have to look at what does the workplace, what's, what's the workforce need to look like?
Absolutely.
In order for our citizens to be, have a sustainable wage. And that means we need to be able to have them career-ready. And that's where CTE has just so much potential and why our CTE teachers are every bit as important as every other teacher that we have. So thank you so much for representing all of our teachers this year.
You are very welcome. It is an honor to represent Orange County Public Schools as well as career in technical education and my own profession of nursing. So thank you very much for having me this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And next, to proclaim May 7th, 2022, as National School Lunch Hero Day in Orange County Public Schools, we've asked Laura Gilbert, Senior Director of Food and Nutrition Services, to come forward. Ms. Gilbert, thank you for being with us. Talk about some of our other unsung heroes that we have here in Orange County Public Schools who have just done yeoman's work over the last two years. Wanted to thank you and everyone who works under your leadership. And if you would, share with us this proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members and Dr. Jenkins. Whereas the staff of Orange County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services Department is committed to providing healthy and nutritious meals to students. And whereas the food service staff who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas food service professionals are working on the front lines during the COVID-19 pandemic and ensuring our students have nutritious meals. And whereas school nutrition professionals were forced to work differently and harder by implementing new safety standards for face-to-face students and preparing curbside meals for distant learners during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas OCPS expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their excellent work on behalf of the district's schoolchildren. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County, Florida does hereby proclaim May 6th, 2022, as National School Lunch Hero Day. Thank you.
And I got to tell you, I love that title, National School Lunch Hero Day. Okay, we are proclaiming. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Just one small note, she doesn't want me to say it, but Laura Gilbert just provided her final resolution as she will be retiring soon. I see her husband Frank Gilbert is here as well as members of her team. If you'd stand to be recognized. Laura, thank you for all the years and all the service. Have your whole team stand up. Frank, stand up too. Frank, stand up too. Frank used to, Frank used to work for us. He says, I'm not his boss anymore.
I was just going to say, does he work for us? I thought he worked for us. I could tell he doesn't work for us.
That's why he didn't stand up when I said stand up.
I got that. I was like, hmm, direct.
Laura, congratulations. Godspeed to you and to Frank.
Absolutely. Enjoy your retirement. Well deserved. All right. We are proclaiming May 22, 2022, as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Orange County Public Schools. We are also proclaiming May 2022 as Haitian Heritage Month in Orange County Public Schools. We are proclaiming May 2022 as Mental Health Month and May 7th, 2022, as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Orange County Public Schools. And to speak a little bit further to this, I want to ask Kimberly Becker, Director of Mental Health Services, to come forward. But first, I wanted to ask Mary Bridges if she would also come forward just in case the.
And I gotta tell you, I love that title, National School Lunch Hero Day. Okay, we are proclaiming. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Just one small note. She doesn't want me to say it, but Laura Gilbert just provided her final resolution as she will be retiring soon. I see her husband Frank Gilbert is here, as well as members of her team. If you'd stand to be recognized. Laura, thank you for all the years and all the service. Have your whole team stand up. Frank, stand up too. Frank, stand up too. Frank used to, Frank used to work for us. He says, "I'm not his boss anymore."
I was just gonna say, does he work for us? I thought he worked for us. I could tell he doesn't work for us.
That's why he didn't stand up when I said stand up.
I got that. I was like, hmm, direct defiance.
Laura, congratulations. Godspeed to you and to Frank.
Absolutely. Enjoy your retirement. Well deserved. All right, we are proclaiming May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Orange County Public Schools. We are also proclaiming May 2022 as Haitian Heritage Month in Orange County Public Schools. We are proclaiming May 2022 as Mental Health Month and May 7th, 2022, as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Orange County Public Schools. And to speak a little bit further to this, I want to ask Kimberly Becker, Director of Mental Health Services, to come forward. But first, I wanted to ask Mary Bridges if she would also come forward just in case the board or members of the public that are with us have not had an opportunity to meet Ms. Beckler. Ms. Bridges, perhaps you can introduce her more properly.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited that I have a new mental health director. Kimberly Beckler is coming to us directly from Howard Middle School, being the principal of Howard Middle School for the past four years. But she's also, in her past, has been a school safe coordinator at, I believe, East River. And I may not get all of her steps, but she was also on our school safe team at the district when we had a larger safe team back around 2013. She became a senior administrator in the learning community and then became an assistant principal and a principal. But I know that her passion has always been mental health. She actually was a licensed mental health counselor and had a private practice. So she brings so much experience from school-based experience to the mental health experience to the position. So I'm just ecstatic that I have her on my team. And so she'll be here so that she can discuss the proclamation.
All right, thank you. And I know one person's mental health has taken a little bit of an improvement, huh?
Thank you so much. And good evening.
Good evening.
Chair Jenkins, Superintendent Jenkins, and members of the board. Proclamation Mental Health Awareness Month and National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families plays a critical responsibility on our community. And whereas it is appropriate that Orange County Public Schools dedicate a time each year to raise the awareness of mental health. And whereas OCPS, through its unique approach to providing resources to students and families with mental health needs, is striving to effectively help students be more successful. And whereas OCPS encourages its citizens to unite and meet the mental health needs of children and youth in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board, Orange County, Florida does hereby proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month and May 7th, 2022, as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Orange County Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We are proclaiming May 2022 as Better Hearing and Speech Month in Orange County Public Schools. We're proclaiming May 2022 as Foster Care Awareness Month in Orange County Public Schools. And May 2022 as Building Safety Month in Orange County Public Schools. And finally, we are proclaiming May 2022 as Internal Awareness Month in Orange County Public Schools. Yeah, it seemed like something was missing there. Internal audit awareness? Yes, thank you. I was like, internal awareness month? I think we should do that every month. I try to do that every morning. Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Vice Chair. That's why you're the Vice Chair. All right, you got it. And Dr. Jenkins, let me ask, do you have any newly appointed administrators to recognize?
We have a few. Kristin Elizabeth Abel was Acting Assistant Principal at Little River. She will become the official assistant principal. Bethany Carol Arcason, Acting AP for West Creek, becomes the official assistant principal. Elizabeth Marie Bounds, Acting Assistant Principal at Eastlake, will take on the role of principal for Eastlake Elementary. Danielle Coats, Acting Assistant Principal for Camelot, becomes the official AP for Camelot. Altamont Byron Cooley III, Acting Assistant Principal at Washington Shores, becomes the assistant principal for Washington Shores. Kathleen Ann Fulbright, from Acting to the official assistant principal at Northlake Park Community School. Christine Marie Markley, from Acting to the Assistant Principal for Wedgefield School K8. Gabriella Omara McConnell, from Acting to the official assistant principal for Chain of Lakes Middle School. And Elanexis Rodriguez Perez, from Acting Assistant Principal to the AP of Hamlin Middle School.
Excellent. Congratulations to each of them. Okay, we are going to move into the official business portion of our meeting. And that means that if anybody is here that isn't necessary, is not required for you to be here. If you'd like to leave, you're welcome to go now. I mean that. I see these looks like, yeah, can I really go? Yes, you can really go. Go home. Look for your jeans that you're putting on tomorrow. We see any of you tomorrow. We will expect to see jeans. Okay, Dr. Jenkins, on to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have two changes to the agenda. We are moving Item 501, Request Approval of the Personnel Agenda for April 26, to Nonconsent Item 1702 due to two recusals. And then we're adding Item 1502, Request Nomination and Approval of an Individual to Serve in the Value Adjustment Board on behalf of the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Chair Fines calls to amend the agenda as requested. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Motion by Member Gould, seconded by Member Castor Dennel. All in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Member Gallo. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public hearings, we have no public hearings at this time. Approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Member Cobert. Is there a second? Second by Member Castor Dennel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on then to Item 1502. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you will recall, we had... I'm sorry, 1702. 1502, we had, was actually in the consent approval. I should still make the announcement, though, I suppose, so everyone is aware of what they just approved.
Okay.
So, Member Gallo, and let me add a disclaimer. This was not because she is absent today. This was a clear agreement on her part. Member Angie Gallo will serve as your appointee to the Value Adjustment Board. She agreed to that earlier today. And because she had agreed and we did not need to continue seeking a volunteer, we added that to 1502, which was on your consent agenda. So you have nominated and approved her. While she's online, she can verify to you it is not because she is absent, but that we had this understanding earlier today before she started feeling unwell. So we certainly appreciate Member Gallo for agreeing to serve.
Oh, we certainly do. And while we traditionally, during the business portion of our meeting, do not engage in applause, just know that we are all silently applauding you right now and thanking you. So thank you, Member Gallo. All right, I apologize for that confusion. So we are nonconsent as consent agenda item 1701.
1701 is the resolution, actually, where we move to nonconsent our personnel agenda. That is because we have... So now your general counsel's correcting me. My apologies. We have two nonconsent items. One is 1701 for our resolution for the millage. And the other one, 1702, will be our personnel agenda, which two of our members need to recuse themselves from. So 1701 is the language, the verbiage that we are proposing to the board for our referendum that needs to be approved tonight. Madam Chair?
All right, and let me ask if we need to take public comment for these two or not?
We do, but we do not have any members on the phone or anyone that filled out a card that wishes to still speak.
All right, just double checking to make sure before we move on that we have no members of the public that wish to speak to 1701. Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval or denial.
So moved for the resolution.
We have a motion?
Move for approval of the resolution for our, I'm looking for the exact language, but for the referendum.
Okay, we have a motion from Member Gould to approve the language for the referendum to go to the Board of County Commission for approval.
Levi, our one mil.
Got it. And we have a second from the Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now your personnel agenda, Item 501, was moved to nonconsent because we have two members of the board that need to announce their recusal. Let's start, begin with Member Lopez.
Member Lopez, you're recognized.
Pursuant to Section 112.3143 Florida statutes, I am abstaining from voting in my official capacity on Item 5.01 due to a conflict of interest which would inure to my benefit. It contains the approval of my leave of absences as a teacher. It is important to candidly disclose this conflict and publicly state that I am abstaining from voting. I will also be filing Form 8B, which is the memorandum of voting conflict for county, municipal, and other local public officers with the Florida Commission on Ethics, with the school board clerk to be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Member Lopez. And the other board member would be Member Felder.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to remove from the consent agenda Item 5.01 and move it to nonconsent. Pursuant to Section 112.3143 Florida statutes, I am abstaining from voting in my official capacity on Item 5.01 due to a conflict of interest which would inure to my benefit. It contains approval of my leave of absence as a teacher. It is important to candidly disclose this conflict and publicly state that I am abstaining from voting. I will also be filing Form 8B, which is the memorandum of voting conflict for county, municipal, and other local public officers provided by the Florida Commission on Ethics, with the school board clerk to be included in the minutes of this meeting.
All right. With that said, I need a motion to accept nonconsent Item 17...
So moved.
01 or 02? 02, thank you.
So moved.
Here, a motion by Member Castor Dennel. Do we have a second? Second by Vice, by Vice Chair? I think it was just a split hair faster with Member Gould. So second by Member Gould, followed by Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Gallo.
No, I'm sorry. Motion carries with all members, but Member Felder and Member Lopez voting in the affirmative, with Member Felder and Member Lopez abstaining due to a conflict of interest. And Member Gallo? Member Gallo, did you vote for that?
Aye, yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. Thank you. So we have all members except, except for the two I just mentioned. Okay, we are on Item 18, I believe, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Some time ago, we endeavored to start gathering information around this notion of what we could remove from teachers' plates. Want to commend Dr. Vasquez, who has been working tirelessly with staff gathering information. This is her first preliminary report back to the board on some areas that we are working on. I will tell you, it is not the last report. We will certainly keep you posted as we continue to plow through some of those ideas. Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins. Well, we are thrilled to be able to share with you that as a result of our principals reaching out to their teachers at every one of our schools, CTA gathering information, our area superintendents holding round tables and surveys that were administered, we received over 6,500 suggestions as to what could come off their plates. So lots to go through. Some of the ideas were wonderful and we'll be able to move forward with them. But some of them did not align with certain aspects of how we do work. And so we took several things into consideration. The first thing was the impact of student achievement when analyzing the various suggestions. Another item of consideration was the accountability system. As you know, we are venturing into a new progress monitoring system for this upcoming school year. And although we do not have specific details as to what that will entail, we do know that it will be three administrations of an assessment, with the final one being the one that will count towards accountability measures. We've also been told that the first two will be much shorter in length than what we have seen with our current FSA. So as a result of that new progress monitoring system coming into play, we are going to be stepping back from the use of iReady, which was one of the items that was mentioned as something that could come off their plates. But you'll hear more about that a little bit later. And then we also had to consider state requirements. There were some things that were suggested, such as eliminating lesson plans. Well, we cannot eliminate lesson plans as they are a requirement, but we certainly can look at how they are collected. We actually have an agreement with our, with CTA. We need to make sure that those, that that agreement remains in place and is being followed. Two other areas were research best practices. I was so happy to see that Maxi was recognized today for the incredible work that's being done at the, at the school. And really, that is a place where you can see some of these research-based practices come alive. And so some of the suggestions were tailored around professional development, professional learning communities, and progress monitoring. And although we cannot take every suggestion that was given within those three areas, we are looking at modifications within each of those. I mentioned lesson plans. Another area that was brought up were interventions. We do have to take, we do have to implement interventions for our students. And another area that was brought forth was curriculum. And so I'd like to look and share with you, what are those things that we believe we are going to actually be able to implement this upcoming school year? There, again, with 65, over 6,500 suggestions, there are others that we will continue to flesh out and see how we may be able to incorporate them in a future date. So professional development. Great suggestions about differentiation of professional development and giving teachers more input as to what professional development they attend. Also about the format. Some teachers were wanting us not to pull them out of the classroom. And so we are looking to provide more opportunities for virtual professional development, opportunities for paid professional development that will, of course, voluntary outside of their instructional day. Keep in mind that with this upcoming year, there will be limited professional development that will have to be mandated because of the new progress monitoring system and new standards. And so we will, again, take that into account when we look at the other offerings within professional development. Interesting comments about duties, and I, although we, they were anonymous. From what was said, some of this really is coming from resource teachers that may be assigned additional duties and that's taking time away from their ability to either work with teachers directly or to work with students. And so we want to see how we can, in some cases, if they're sharing positions, such as a curriculum, a CT and a staffing specialist, or a CT and a testing coordinator. We may, through Esther Dollars, be able to provide some limited support as we work through these next two years. We have already given the schools additional allocations for staffing. for staffing that will assist in some of those areas. So, the idea of making sure principals understand and share how creative they are in spreading out those duties and making sure that teachers have the opportunity to perform the services that we are asking them to perform, especially as it relates to resource teachers. Data collection was huge. And I believe that is also an area that we will be able to make some great strides. We are currently working with Robert Curran and his team to create a dashboard that will be much more comprehensive than what we currently have, that will allow principals, administrators, area offices to pull data that's available so that teachers are not tasked with pulling that data. Now, we do want them to look at their data. We want them to know their data so they can make informed decisions about their practice. But there were comments about having to fill out spreadsheets or collect data that is readily available through some of our programs. And so, once that data visualization project is completed, and we expect that that will be done this summer, that will provide another tool for data collection and manipulating of data so that teachers don't have to pull it. And it will also make it easier for them to analyze the data that's there. Interventionists, we're going to be able to keep them for the next two years. There were comments about having additional staff in the classroom to reduce class size, to allow them to really hone in on some of the areas of need that students have. And so, we are going to be able to continue with those interventionist. Technology was interesting. Most of it centered around having to track and put in requests for student devices that are damaged. So, an overwhelming theme was that maybe we could have students enter their own requests for repairs. So, that is something that we're going to bring to the IT team to see how feasible that might be. Meetings was another one that had some, excuse me, some mixed ideas, from eliminating all meetings to looking at which ones really provide valuable information that need to have face-to-face interaction or virtual interaction, and which things will we just send out in an email. And so, we are going to work both at the district level, at the learning community level, and at the school level to really tailor the messaging that goes out. And for those meetings that we are holding, first identify, can it be done as effectively virtually, which will, again, cut down on travel time, and if not, face-to-face. Paperwork, paperwork, paperwork. I'm very pleased to say that our, and a lot of it was around ESC 504. Susan Abbey and her team have been working for several months on digging into the data that we have on our, that's required, and the paperwork. An example that they gave, which has already been or is being put into practice, a teacher who would attend a meeting, an IEP meeting or a 504 meeting, would also have to fill out a form that she, and give input. So, if they're attending, we don't really need for them to fill out that input form as well. So, we're going to see a reduction in paperwork for specifically IEPs and 504s. Some of it is being put into effect for summer school meetings, and then we'll see more of that roll out throughout the year. We will then also take a look at what other documents we may be asking our teachers and staff to complete that could be digitized or combined, because that's another area that we found information that may have been contained on an MTSS form was needing to be then transcribed to an input form for an IEP meeting. So, trying to limit that. Communication, as specifically as it relates to too many emails, I think many of us can relate. But there was a very interesting comment, which I do believe we will be able to implement for this upcoming school year. Spoke about valuing and respecting the time outside of the duty day unless it was an emergency. And so, while some people may send emails at, you know, different times of the day, making sure our teachers and our staff understand, you may be getting an email from me at 8:00 at night because that's the time that I'm able to do that. I don't need for you to respond. That can wait until next day during your duty day. If it's an emergency, I'll reach out. But that was also a common theme. And I believe that in many instances, it's a matter of them not understanding that we don't need for you to reply at this time. So, I think we're going to, we're going to make great strides there. In reviewing the suggestions, it was clear that we, that teachers don't all have a common understanding of some of our practices, of some of the things that we are asking them to do or not do. And that comes back to us as being, as not being able to really push down a common message about what our expectations are. And so, that's an area that we're going to work on as well so that they have a clear understanding as to why we're doing things. And I think that's going to help with some of the misconceptions and perceptions of things they think they're, they need to do when, in reality, they're not. In the area of curriculum, mixed reviews. Some not wanting CRMs, some saying we need more CRMs, that they're spending too much time trying to dig through resources, that they want those readily available to them. We have an incredible opportunity with the new standards, where we are having to rewrite our curriculum resource materials. With new legislation, we're also having to review some of the resources that we are currently using. So, we'll be able to tie into that. Another example of messaging is a repeated comment that they were forced to use the curriculum resource materials. And while I will tell you that we are not forcing individuals to use the CRMs, we highly recommend them. We give teachers the opportunity to demonstrate that they are developing and delivering standards-based instruction. When we don't see evidence of that, that is when we will intervene. It should be a collaborative conversation to discuss what supports. This is what you're seeing as standard-based. This is what the interpretation is of those standards. How can we work together? And then, demonstrate that the CRMs are a tool that they can use that will meet the standards. Evaluation and observations was another key theme. We will be revisiting our evaluation system this upcoming school year. We are going to gather input from our teachers. We're going to work with CTA as well. Mixed messages about whether we want to eliminate or revise. And the comments really centered around looking at teachers' past performance. Could that have an impact on the number of observations, both formal and informal? Deliberate practice was another area that came up. So, we have an opportunity to come to the table, have conversations about what is required by the state, because any evaluation system that we submit has to be approved by the state. But that we really can work on some tweaks to make it meaningful and not as taxing. Surveys. Jennifer Sasser and her team were tasked with identifying all the surveys that we distribute. Over 50% of them are not mandated. They're not required. And so, we are in the process now of meeting with those individuals who the non-mandated surveys are tied to, to see, do we need to distribute the survey? Do we have this information somewhere else that we don't need to put out as many surveys? So, that's something that we are already in the works. I spoke to you about ESC and 504 documentation. That will be ongoing. Interesting in the area of discipline, comments about not having time to contact parents with the referral. That's one where we know best practice really is that the teacher is the one that makes that first contact if the child isn't behaving. But it's understandable that with limited time, if they can't reach a parent and then they have to continue to try and contact them. So, that's an area we're going to try and see how principals have put in place effective systems, because in some schools, that's not an issue. That's not a concern. And then, the last item is extended contract and planning days. Overwhelmingly, those were positives that came across. They want to see them continue. This summer, we are giving teachers five voluntary planning days that they can take during the month of June or July. With the new standards, probably a great time for them to just start to understand what those changes are. We will continue to provide planning days during the school year. Substitutes, again, were an issue. And wanting a little bit of flexibility with how those planning days were handled. So, we're looking at, can we do some in the afternoon and chunk them in maybe three-hour increments? Or look at them on a Saturday and paying them on a Saturday? But overwhelmingly, they love and want more of the planning days. And we were able to continue with the extended contract days that we gave last year. Our CTs, our staffing specialists that are just overwhelmed, they will be able to get the same number of days. Our guidance counselors will also be getting days. We are also going to be extending days to media specialists or instructional personnel. As you may know, we are refreshing about half of our devices this summer, which should help greatly with fines and breakage. And that's going to take place at all of our middle and high schools. It's going to require our media specialists. If media specialists aren't available, then principals will be able to task other instructional personnel. So, we're giving them days to be able to accomplish that. So, that's our first overview. We will definitely keep you abreast of not only these, but any others that we're able to implement for this upcoming school year.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Just two notes I would add. First, let me thank Member Castro Dennel. She was the first one, I think, that started using the term, what can we take off the plate? And Dr. Vasquez and her team have done a yeoman's job at sorting through those 6,500. There's still more work to be done. We'll certainly keep you updated. I was going to say, Dr. Vasquez would send an email to all teachers. But what I'd like to say instead is there will be a very brief email, because I believe when we invited our teachers through their faculty meetings and through their surveys and roundtables to participate, that we have to give them indication of what we have been able to glean so far. So, there will be at least a summary email to our teachers, all of our teachers tomorrow, so that they know how we're moving forward. Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Ms. Enval, do you have a report for the board? Okay. And we have no committee reports. Do we have any items that board members feel need to be? Any policy-level items that the board wants to see scheduled? Pardon me, go ahead. Do you want to speak?
I just wanted to comment on Dr. Vasquez.
I didn't realize you would press your button.
Yes. I wanted to, where'd she go? Oh, okay, okay. Well, I wanted to thank you for all that work, because what, the things that you brought up are definitely things that even though I've been out of the classroom for a few years, still ring true. I mean, from my experience and my discussions with teachers. And one of the great things from this process is that not only did you reflect what you heard in all those comments, but the teachers now heard you say what they said. And there is so much value in their knowing they were heard. And then, you gave specific examples of things that you're going to look into or ideas and solutions. And to say those out loud, again, you're kind of holding yourself accountable for continuing to make those changes. And I appreciate that. That's bold. And the things that you have discovered and have really gone to, you know, a deep dive and been very specific, I think are going to be very effective. There's, of course, other things, but these are here are key. And every little thing that you can do, it makes a difference. It's going to take the weight off so many at once, even if it's a little bit at a time. From professional development, the teacher, teachers have, you know, more of a choice of what they do. The data collection, I hear a lot about. And I'm glad to hear that you're going to look for pulling the data from other places where it's already located. And the data dashboard that you're going to be creating over the summer, I wonder, maybe you've already thought of this, but if during the development, some teachers also are in on what that looks like on the end-user side, so that they can kind of explain what would be helpful. Just, they have the experience of what data they have to look at at the same time. So, it might be helpful to have some other eyes as well on that. The meetings. I love that you can think about what can be sent in an email instead, because the unnecessary meetings just lead to lower morale when they're, you know, stressed for time. And the evaluation system, I know you were already looking into that. And there's going to be a lot of change coming to the district this coming year with new superintendent, new standards, new evaluation. And hopefully, no more COVID. But it's going to be, it's still going to be a difficult year with all those changes. So, looking at this now, I think, is going to help with our teachers when they think about, do I stay or do I go? Now they hear that we're listening and we're acting. And I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Member Castro Dennel. Yeah, echo, echo. All right. And any policy-level items that the board wants to schedule? We have quite a bit on our schedule right now with regard to policies. So, we will see everybody back here tomorrow morning, I believe, at 10:00. Am I correct? Yes? Okay. All right. With that, with no further, Member Lopez, go ahead.
I just want to make a few comments in reference to the Florida Puerto Rican Parade. I would love to congratulate the Principal Superintendent Vasquez. She was the international godmother of the parade. I would love to congratulate her. I also want to congratulate Dr. Vasquez, Principal of Village Park Elementary School. She was the godmother of the parade as well. So, also, I want to say thank you to Board Member Gallo, because she was in the, during the visit for University High School with Ponce Mayor and the Secretary of Education of Ponce, the city of Puerto Rico, one of the main cities of Puerto Rico. And also, thank you to Board Member Cover to be with them as well this morning in Weatherby Elementary School. And also, I would love to say thank you to Chair Jacob for... And also, I would love to say thank you to Chair Jacob for being so supportive in the Florida Puerto Rican Parade Gala as well, supporting our Puerto Rican culture. And also, I would like to make a comment in reference to HB 1557, because I think that we have a lot of constituents very confused, saying that we are teaching sexuality in OCPs. That is not true. And it is sad that a bill can confuse people, because it's saying something that doesn't exist in our system. And I just want to be very clear, you know, that everybody that is listening to us know that we're not teaching about sexuality. And what bothered me is when I hear people saying that our LGBTQ AI+ are not good citizens. They are good citizens. They have values. So, you know, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that if everybody's saying something there during the pre-agenda, and we're not saying anything, it's not because we are in support of that type of offensive comments, because I think that we are very inclusive, and the heterosexual community as well have values and are good citizens, and our LGBTQ also have good values and are good citizens as well. So, I just want to be clear on that point, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Very well said, Member Lopez. Okay. If there's nothing further, we'll see everybody back here tomorrow morning at 10:00. Meeting is adjourned.